The League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization, encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support a specific party or specific candidates. Although, obviously, many of our League members are very involved in the political process, and we do encourage our members to support the candidates of their choice. The League does not take a position. Tonight, we are here for the San Maria City Council, candidates for the 3rd and the 4th District. And we will be going through those in the following format. Each candidate will have three minutes to introduce themselves and explain why he or she is running, followed by each candidate having two minutes to address two different questions. We will rotate who we start with answers as we go through so that everybody gets a chance to answer first. Following our 15-minute intermission break, hopefully, many of you will have questions. The questions need to be submitted in writing. And we do have 3x5 cards, so if anybody needs those cards, or if you want to grab one right now, we can have somebody come by and drop one off so that you can write down your questions as you're listening. Some of the rules for our questions, we do like them to be the type that can be answered by all of the members. Those that are specific or seem to be attacking one or another candidate are not allowed. Obviously, profanity and other types of vitriol are also not allowed. So, once we have collected these, we will sort them out and try to get to as many questions as we can. Some of -- because especially if you have such a nice, large audience, which is exciting, but if you could hold your applause and indications of yes I agree, no I don't agree during the candidate's talking points. Remember that they are under a time limit, so if you start clapping and you can't hear what they're saying, you are using up their time. So, if you could please hold all of that until the end. Um, let's see. Do I have to get anything else? I think that's it. Okay, well, again, thank you and welcome. Again, I would like to thank all of our candidates for running. We are very fortunate in San Maria and our area to have so many people that are interested in serving our community. All right, are we ready?
Ready.
Okay. So, we are going to start out, and I think I am going to start over here with Ms. Soto. So, the first three-minute period is for each of you to introduce yourself. The timers, who are seated right here at the front, will have a 30-second, a 15-second warning, and a stop. At the stop sign, I will pop up and cut you off. So, that's kind of how it works. So, Ms. Soto, if we could go ahead and start with you. Your three minutes starts now.
Great. Good evening and thank you all so much for being here. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us this evening. Again, my name is Gloria Soto, and I'm a proud San Maria product. I was born and raised here, born to immigrant farm-working parents who taught me the value of hard work and determination. Growing up, I remember the struggles that my parents faced trying to find adequate, affordable housing for us, difficulties putting food on the table, and also making sure that I had an adequate education. I am proud of the sacrifices that they made because thanks to them, I'm able to have this privilege of being able to run for an elected office. I see this as, again, a great privilege and something that I don't take lightly. I have been in the nonprofit sector since I graduated college. I breathe and live our community and hope to be of service, continue to be of service to others. I serve on the Board of Directors for Future Leaders of America, a tri-regional organization. I also am on the Board of Directors for the Fund for Santa Barbara and have served on their Grant Making Committee, which has given me the opportunity to connect with a vast number of different community-based organizations that are striving to create a social change here locally, make a social impact. And through my work with the Grant Making Committee, I was able to have an understanding of the vast needs of our communities. And, again, as someone who was born and raised in San Maria, as someone who has deep love for our community, I want nothing more than to see our community thrive and succeed. I want to make sure that my story, my success, my privilege of being able to run for an elected office is not the exception, but the rule for all young people that are coming before me. And the only way we can make that happen is by creating systematic change, and I hope to be able to do that, serving on our current, on our city council. Thank you.
Dr. Moats.
Good evening. My name is Michael Moats. Well, I forgot to turn it on. That can have consequences. Yeah, hi, my name's Mike Moats. I'm a current city councilman for the city of San Maria. I was born in West Los Angeles, and I pretty much stayed in West Los Angeles for the first 30 years of my life. I attended UCLA undergrad and also UCLA medical school. When I was attending UCLA undergrad, we had free tuition. Imagine that. I sat next to Kareem Abdul-Jabbar in history class, and I paid 25 cents a ticket for mid-court tickets during UCLA's basketball dynamic run. So, that was probably the highlight of going to UCLA. After I finished medical school, I did three further years of training at LA County USC Medical Center. And immediately after that, I moved to San Maria 40 years ago. And for the last 40 years, I've been practicing medicine here in San Maria in my specialty of dermatology. I am married. My wife and I are about to celebrate our 29th wedding anniversary. We have four children. It's a mixed marriage. I brought in two, and she brought in two, so we had four. They all went to local high schools. We now have seven grandchildren, five of whom still live here. When I first came to San Maria for the first two years here, I did some interesting things other than dermatology. I was an emergency room physician at the Old Valley Community Hospital. Maybe I contributed to shutting down. I also was the medical director for the San Maria Methadone Maintenance Clinic, where I dealt with the heroin-using community for some time. I, right. I've spent nine years in San Maria, working for the city, seven years on the Planning Commission, two years on the City Council. I've become quite vested in the city of San Maria and concerned for its welfare. So, I'd like to continue working for the city, and so, vote for me.
Thank you. Mr. Gutierrez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rafael Gutierrez. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm the youngest of 11 kids and the first one to go to college. I went to Reggini High School. Then I went to Hancock, and I graduated from Hancock. I went to UC Berkeley, then Columbia Law School. I consider San Maria my hometown. The reason I am running is because I believe in this city and in the people who live in this city. And because I believe in this city's potential and these people, that is the reason that I am running. And I am running specifically because I believe the city is completely on the wrong track. For the last 20 to 30 years, we have focused our efforts on completely the wrong path. We talk about revitalizing the downtown, and at the same time, we approve projects like hotels at the north end of town instead of encouraging to be set in the downtown area. We talk about making the city more pedestrian and bicycles friendly, and instead of doing that, we approve a theater in the mall in which you cannot enter the theater until you go inside the mall. How is that being pedestrian-friendly? Now, instead of attracting good-paying jobs, jobs that offer good wages and good benefits, for the last 20 years, we have neglected job creation in this city. We depend entirely too much on agriculture. Here's the thing. Agriculture is always going to be the backbone of the local economy. We cannot depend entirely on it. We have to diversify the city's tax base and the city's employment base. And the reason for that is simple. Take into account the fact that right now, we're running at 8.5 million deficit, and we are in a booming economy, and that will tell you more than anything else that we're completely on the wrong path. What we're seeing is an increase in the cost of providing services while the tax base is remaining stagnant. And so, one of the basic functions of government, particularly the city government, is to provide the environment for businesses to grow and thrive. And another thing that we're doing, instead of focusing on that, is we are approving shopping centers over by the edge of the freeway. The problem with that is this, is that every time we do that, without countering the negative effects that those shopping centers have on the local merchants, the ones along Main and Broadway, we are basically killing the local economy. And that's why I am running. Also, another reason is the crime. We talk about fighting crime, and we don't approach fighting crime in different ways.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank, first of all, the League of Women Voters and all the sponsors for hosting this event. You guys always do a great job, and I just really appreciate getting involved and getting everybody involved. My name is Etta Waterfield, and I was elected to the San Maria City Council in 2014. As an elected official, I serve on various other boards, alternate members of the Santa Barbara County Association of Government, the APCD, which is the Air Pollution Control District, the Multijuridistical Solid Waste Group, and Laughco. I am currently the Executive Director of the San Maria Police Council, which is a nonprofit organization that was established in 2005. And the reason for this organization, it was a group of citizens that wanted to make sure that our public safety, particularly our police department, had the equipment, the funds, and the materials to be able to protect themselves as they went out and patrolled the city. We fund them, which our city budget cannot afford the outside budgeting for these type of equipments. Our first item that we purchased for our police officers were for the taser guns. And so, we wanted to make sure that each officer had a taser gun as they went out. These are local citizens that put their own personal money, private money, into public safety to make sure that we have a good and strong police force. Prior to that, I worked for more than a decade with the San Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Association, which was the EDA, in economic development. While I was there, I was involved in creating the Central Coast Regional Technology Alliance, which was a predecessor of the organization to the California Space Authority. And that organization paved the way for the commercial launching of commercial space flights. My opponent says that we do not bring high-technology jobs to the area. We certainly do. You can't get higher technology coming to San Maria with the Lockheed Martins, the Martin Mariettas, and those others that have been converted into other industries in creating private industry to launch commercial space launches out of Vandenberg Air Force Base. And that was something that I was very much a part of back in the 1990s. We did a great job in providing those high-paying jobs, which are now converted statewide to the state of California. Along the way, I've given my numerous personal time to community projects, serving on the San Maria Planning Commission for 11 years, the San Maria Police Advisory Council, the San Maria Fair Part Board member, which I was appointed twice by Governor Schwarzenegger. I've been a past board member for PCPA Foundation. And as you can see, I am invested in this community, and I will continue to be invested in this community in the city of San Maria. My husband and I have three children and 11 grandchildren.
Thank you very much.
All right, so the candidates were provided with a couple of questions for them to start out with. So, our first two-minute response is going to come from Dr. Moats. What is the top challenge facing the city of San Maria, and what is your proposed solution?
Well, I think the top challenge is... The top challenge for the city of San Maria is its financial integrity. As Mr. Gutierrez said, we are facing an $8.5 million budget deficit. And we were able to close the deficit this year by pretty much exhausting our lead fund, which is kind of a rainy day fund, by getting concessions from our employees, by having the department heads reduce their budget by 10%, and by not filling unfilled vacancies. And this is not a sustainable way to run a city. And this is true despite the fact that our income's going up. Our sales tax revenue's going up. Our transient occupancy taxes going up. Our poverty taxes going up. We're even doing well on the non-hazardous impacted soils. So, why is it that we're running a budget deficit despite the fact our income's going up? And the problem lies completely on the shoulders of our liabilities with the retired people in the past who are getting pensions administered by Cal-Purs. Every year, Cal-Purs seems to be increasing the requirement for pension funding by $1 or $2 million. And I'm not blaming Cal-Purs. This is kind of a legacy problem. And how are we going to solve it? We're going to solve it by passing Measure U. Measure U is vitally critical to the welfare of the city of San Maria. A great benefit will come to us if it passes, and we'll be in few trouble if it fails.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Mr. Gutierrez, same question. What is the top challenge facing the city of San Maria, and what is your proposed solution?
I believe that economic viability of the city is engine. And I believe that is the top, the biggest challenge the city is facing. And the reason for that is this. The economic viability of the city affects every other aspect of the city's life. It affects crime, because one of the major drivers of crime, we know, is poverty. And then, if we don't have the tax base to support providing essential public services like police, then we're not going to be able to guarantee public safety. So, economic diversity, economic growth is, should be the city's priority, but it should not be the only priority. It should also be combating crime, and combating crime through innovative approaches like community policing. And I agree with Dr. Moats that one of the ways that we're going to solve this problem is actually by taxing, increasing the sales tax, apparently. But here's the problem. We are having to increase the sales tax during an economic time when we not only are experiencing a booming economy, but we just approved a brand-new shopping center. We're building brand-new neighborhoods on the west area of San Maria. And how is it that we came to this point? I'll tell you how. We have disinvested completely in the city. We are not investing in making the city attractive. If you go to the average person on the street, they will tell you that there are not enough jobs. And that is backed up by statistics that show that in the Central Coast, San Maria is the city with the highest rate of unemployment. I'm not making that up. That's a fact. Here's another thing. We are not encouraging enough companies to come and provide 21st-century jobs, and we must do that.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield, let me repeat that once more. What is the top challenge facing the city of San Maria, and what is your proposed solution?
Well, in hearing what Dr. Moats and Mr. Gutierrez just spoke about, the number-one component for combating all this would be public safety. If you don't have good public safety in the city of San Maria, you do not have a good quality of life. You will not bring jobs to the Central Coast, nor to the city of San Maria. One main component that is very darn interesting that my opponent is so unaware of is that he doesn't realize that we fight with the state all the time. Sacramento has taken $55 million from the city of San Maria, just the city of San Maria alone. So, we have to become very innovative and happy to make up those expenses. So, while we're doing that, we're working on public safety. We built a state-of-the-art police department. We're doing enterprise services within our police department with our server farm, with our IT. We have municipalities. We have clients. We have businesses paying us for their dispatch service to host their farms. You talk about innovative. We've done so many things, but my opponent is very unaware because he's never been involved with the city of San Maria. He's never been at any of the community meetings when it comes to deciding what needs to be done, how do we do it, where do we get the money, and who's going to pay for it. Measure U is one of the opponents, is one of the propositions that we must pass because of Sacramento and the $55 million that they have taken away from the city of San Maria. That affects every person within the city of San Maria, not just one segment, but everybody, all the way from housing to everything that you need to live.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Soto, what is the top challenge facing the city, and what is your proposed solution?
One of the top challenges that I believe our city is facing is a lack of affordable housing. Here in the city of San Maria, we have a 3% to 5% vacancy rate. Homes are going up for sale for $389,000. Rent for a two-bedroom apartment is going for $1,900 a month. And families are earning less than $56,000 a year. In order for families to be able to stay afloat if they were to be working a minimum-wage job, they would have to work two minimum-wage jobs full-time to be able to cover the expenses, to be able to live here in our community. And even though people say that here in San Maria, we are the most affordable city in the Central Coast, they are correct. But they also have to look at the income, the median income that our families are making here locally. And so, when we're talking about the lack of affordable housing, when we're talking about our homelessness situation here in San Maria, that is completely tied to the economic stability of our city. If there are folks who are houseless and they are sitting outside of businesses, our businessness are not going to thrive. They're not going to be doing well. And so, when we're talking about helping our neighbors, this means not just doing it because it's the moral right thing to do, but also because, again, it is a business plan. It's a business model that works. And so, along with that, we also need to make sure that we are supporting our young people and their families. Here in Santa Barbara County, we have one of the highest youth incarceration rates. Five out of 1,000 youth are being incarcerated here. And that's not okay. And so, when we're talking about changing the outcome for our community's future, we need to invest in all of our families. We need to invest in our youth, and we need to be helping our neighbors.
So, Mr. Gutierrez, we will start with you on our next question. Again, two minutes per candidate. What makes your district unique? And how will proceeds from Measure U, if it passes, be used to improve your district?
Well, to begin with, I'd like to say that I don't pretend to know what my opponent is thinking. I think on my own, I guess I got to turn it on. So, here's the thing. My district, as you know, District 4, the one I'm in, is one of the largest in the city. It has the largest amount, number of eligible voters, and the largest number of registered voters. It is one of the districts that has the most commercial space. Most of the new shopping centers are located there. It is also one of the districts with the highest number of senior citizens. And the issue of housing and public transportation is one that affects them greatly. I think that most senior citizens in my district want to be able to stay in the home where they live or move to some other place that's more affordable and age-in-place. And the current policies pursued by the city are not making that easy. They also, I believe, would like to be able to take public transportation, but not just take public transportation anywhere, but actually have places to go. So, that's why one of my priorities is to actually concentrate on revitalizing the downtown, to offer more places for not just the senior citizens, but for young people, for young families. Because we need to have, as a community, what I call the heart, a place where we can commune with each other. And the downtown is the perfect place. Historically, we, you know, obviously destroyed most of the historic buildings there, but I believe that we need to focus on that because in order for us to attract better-paying jobs and companies that pay those salaries, we need to show to those companies that we are willing to invest ourselves in the city. And we're not doing that now.
Thank you.
And how will proceeds from Measure U be used, in your opinion, to improve your district?
Well, Jennifer, we may be a new district, but San Maria, we are still one community. We will not be divided. There's a misconception about the San Maria districts. And on June 15, 2017, we came as a council, united, and making sure that we did not become divided in the city of San Maria. So, the city council governed, decided that we were governed at large considering the needs and interests of the entire community. The city council wishes to remain united with service to the community. Any member of the city council will help anyone in the community who calls or contacts them. Customer service is the priority. Resources will be allocated based on the needs and the expertise of the entire city of San Maria. And I've got to say this, you know, one more time. We are, we may be a new district, but we're not going to become a divided city. We have never become a divided city. I can tell you that each city councilperson and the mayor has always had an open door to their office or to their telephone. Shoot, on my city council card, I have my personal cellphone number. So, if anyone can't get ahold of me, it's not because of me, because I'm not accessible. It's because they have a trip card enough. City Hall has always been open to each and every individual. I serve city members or I serve constituents right now across the board, from the north, south, east, west. And I will continue to do that. If you want to talk about my district, you know, you have Ellen Hancock, you have the hospital, you have the Ennis Ranch, you have all these things. But I look at the entire city as one whole, and I cannot be put in a geographical area.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Sorry to take my glasses off. Ms. Soto, what makes your district unique, and how will proceeds from Measure U be used to improve your district?
My district is unique because over 40% of those who live in it are under the age of 19. And so, when we're talking about Measure U, when we're talking about the extension of it, we're looking at $18 million that will be coming into the city. One of the things that I want to make sure is that a portion of those dollars that are coming in are being allocated to youth leadership, to youth development. Statistically, it is shown that the more young people are civically engaged, the more likely they are to complete their college education, come back to their communities, and take leadership positions here locally. Again, if we want to change the outcome for our community's future, it is essential that we focus our efforts in our young people and in their families. When you look at crimes, in 2015, we saw a surge of crime rates here in San Maria. Most of that crime, our youth, were the ones that were being targeted. And 75% of all crimes that are committed are committed by those who don't have a high school degree. And so, when we're talking about lowering criminal activity in our community, when we're talking about creating economic stability, we need to invest in our young people. And it's essential that we invite them to the table. In Santa Barbara, they have a youth council committee. Why isn't it that here in San Maria, we can't have that?
Um, what makes your district unique? And how will the proceeds from Measure You, if it passes, be used to improve your district?
Well, I have to kind of agree with.
I have to agree with Councilwoman Waterfield about this one, that it's the general belief of the city council that we govern for the benefit of the entire city. And that we weren't real happy about balkanizing our community in the first place. There wasn't a whole lot of support from the city council for districting, but we were kind of forced into districting because of a law called the California Voters' Right Act and the threat of litigation that we probably lose and what costs us a whole lot of money. Even so, the districting only succeeded by a three to two vote. And if you'll notice, I have the biggest district, geographical one. There really isn't, I think, a whole lot of community of interest. There's probably, I would describe the uniqueness of my district by its diversity. We have some of the wealthiest areas in Santa Maria in my district, and some of the most economically disadvantaged areas. We have, we have the industrial park on McCoy and A Street, and we have the agricultural areas of Lynette Farms. We go from the Sheila Nula district all the way down to Park and Fox and Woods. So it's my feeling that as a city councilperson, we need to be concerned about the whole city. And there's nothing specific I would do to benefit the third district that I wouldn't do for the entire city. And I completely agree with Mrs. Soto.
Thank you, Dr. Moes, we love you. All right, so this is your special time now. We have cards. You can kind of wave one of us down. Please write them up as quickly as possible, but as legibly as possible. One question per card, if you can. And we will pick them up and sort them and get to questions. When it comes to our questions, one of them is each question needs to be able to be addressed to each of our panelists. So again, we have a finite amount of time, so if everyone could please hold their applause until after the end, that means that we can get to more questions. If we can't do that, then there will be fewer questions asked. We will try to get to five or six different questions, but again, we need to leave eight minutes for each question so that each person has a chance to answer completely and that we have a fair, yes. All right, so we will be starting with, who did I leave off? Oh, I think I start with Ms. Waterfield. You're the only one that I didn't start with.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we had quite a few questions that had to do with housing and the homelessness problem, and so we kind of combined that one. What ideas do you have specifically for working on the affordable housing and homelessness issue that continues to face our community? And I'll read it before each of you answers, so two minutes, thank you.
Okay, I can tell you what we are doing in regard to affordable housing. In affordable housing, we have built numerous farm, farm worker homes within the city of Santa Maria. We have, in the city of Santa Maria, thirty-six percent of our low-income affordable housing just in the city of Santa Maria. So when you become the largest, when you are the largest city of Santa Maria, you are gonna provide the largest amount of housing to the city of Santa Maria as well. We're also including affordable housing as the mobile homeowner units as well, because these people are just very vital group of people that when a spouse dies, they are one retirement or one paycheck away of going into homelessness. So we acquired a grant, and a part of that grant is that we're gonna do preventive homelessness for people who are in the homes currently, right now. We're working, I'm on the board with Home for Good, which is a nonprofit organization through the United Way. Home for Good is a great organization that will provide the transition of a homeless person into a home for good. Of course, there are gonna be requirements that you have to have in regards to maintain a house and being able to go into one. We also work with Good Sam, we work with the Salvation Army for the homeless as well. And so this is something that we, I can't see the, this is, this is something that we are always continuing to working with, with the homeless and with the affordable housing. You talk about affordable housing, this is, this is something that's gonna shock you. We've got a new development on Depot and Main Street. It's for about seventy-five units. That affordable housing, because of state mandate, is gonna cost thirty-seven million dollars to build. That's about three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a unit. So there's a lot of components that go into this.
Thank you. Ms. Soto, ideas for working on improving housing and affordable housing and reducing the homeless problem in our community?
I understand that our city has been trying to be proactive in coming up with solutions that have to do around homelessness and the lack of affordable housing, but when over twenty-three percent of Santamareans are still living in poverty, it's not enough. When I drive by Main Street and Broadway and I see people that are living on the streets, it's still not enough. And so I believe that there's a lot more that we can do. Inclusionary housing ordinances that pressure developers to, to sell an X percentage of newly-developed homes under the fair market value is one of the solutions. As well as having rent control here in the city of Santa Maria, which I know will be coming down the pipeline through the, i- if, through this November, if it passes through the state. And so, as well as also protecting our mobile homeowners. I know that the city of Galita has put in place an ordinance that would make it difficult for mobile homeowners to be displaced. For instance, if a mobile home park were to close, they would have to pay a relocation fee to, to all of those who live in there. And so in a city where five percent of those who, of, of, of units are, are mobile homes, it's important that, that we are protecting, protecting all of them. And I agree, Home for Good is, is a, a great collaborative that, that is taking place here in the city, in the, in the, in the county of Santa Barbara. I know that there are four new affordable unit, affordable housing units that would be put in place, but again, when twenty-three percent of those who live here in Santa Maria are still living in poverty, there's a lot more than that that we can do.
Dr. Moes, ideas for working on increasing affordable housing and decreasing homelessness in our community?
Well, the city of Santa Maria doesn't build affordable housing. The city of Santa Maria doesn't own land, and the city of Santa Maria doesn't construct things. What we have to do is get developers interested in doing these things, which we can do by possibly rezoning things that are manufacturing or commercial now into R3 or high-density residential, and by giving the developers density bonuses to encourage them to build homes that are less expensive. And when I say homes, I mean apartments. People who can't afford to live in apartments certainly can't afford to buy homes. Probably infill would be a good idea. We still have areas in Santa Maria which we could build new homes. We also possibly in the future could annex territory outside the city and build affordable housing there. As far as the homeless problem goes, this is a real problem. And it's a problem certainly not unique to Santa Maria. It's probably much worse than Santa Barbara, Santa Luis, this way. And the United Way and the city of Santa Maria are working together with the Home for Good that people of Waterfield mentioned. And we have, I think, about eighty-five or so unsheltered homeless people that live in Santa Maria. And Home for Good is making an attempt to relate individually with these people and get to know them and figure out their needs and try and get them transitioned into some kind of immediate housing. The most important thing is to house people immediately.
Thank you. Mr. Gutierrez, ideas for working on affordable housing and decreasing homelessness in our community?
Well, so the root causes of homelessness are varied. It can be mental, oh, can you hear me? Okay, good. The root causes, as I was saying, the root causes of homelessness are, are numerous. One of them is, you know, mental health issues, drug addiction, and lack of opportunities in employment and education. Obviously, if we are gonna address the issue of homelessness, we have to address all of those, all of those issues together. So when we provide housing, we also have to provide the support that the people who are getting the housing need in order to succeed, because there's no point in us giving somebody housing when they need just more than that, just to hold on to that housing. So we have to work on all of those issues. The way we do it is, one, we apply for every community development grant available out there, so we can build affordable housing. Part of the problem of homelessness is the lack of affordability in the city. We have the lowest real estate prices in the area, but yet we still have unaffordable housing. And the reason for that is because we keep building single-family residences instead of building more condominiums and apartments. One of the reasons that we should, one of the things that we should do is we should designate Main and Broadway as a high-density area and encourage developers through the provision of tax breaks and fast-track permitting to build this type of developments along Main and Broadway. And then as a city, we should provide logistical support for those projects in terms of, you know, making the sidewalks bigger, doing improvements to the, to the city's infrastructure in order to, you know, make those projects more affordable and encourage that.
Thank you. All right, so Ms. Soto, I think I'm starting with you this time. Okay. We had lots of questions about the youth and particularly inclusion in decision-making, not only for the youth, but for other subgroups, Latino community, the elderly, homeless population, et cetera. There were lots of questions, but it all really had to do with inclusion, but particularly about young people. So how will you assure that there is inclusion on the mayor's task force or the planning commission and other groups from the, from young people and other groups that sometimes are underrepresented?
Great question. Here in the city of Santa Maria, the average age is twenty-nine years old. In those terms, we are younger than even the state of California, which is, the average age is thirty-six years old. And so instead of us telling young people what we, what we believe the solution is to their problems, we need to be inviting them to the table. And I know that the mayor's youth task force was, was initiative that began after twenty, during, after the, the gang violence that arose here in twenty fifteen, but it was very disheartening to see that young people in the beginning were not invited. And so instead of us telling young people what we believe the solutions are to them, again, we need to be inviting them to the table. Like I said, the city, the city of Santa Barbara has a, a youth council committee. And so in order for us to truly be advocating for our young people, again, it's important that we listen to them, that we listen to their needs, and that we give them the opportunity to practice leadership. Leadership development is, is key. And so I know that the city has said that they're, that they're listening to young people, that they're working alongside them, that they've invited, that they have invited them to a couple of meetings, but it's, it's, it's still not, it's still not enough. And so like I said, I would, I would advocate for us to have a youth council similar to like in the city of Santa Barbara, and truly, and truly speak, and walk the talk.
All right, thank you. Again, guys, come on. Not much. Again, how will you assure that there is inclusion on decision-making bodies such as the mayor's task force and the planning commission, et cetera, for youth or young people, but other underrepresented groups? Thank you.
The mayor's task force, what it intent was is to bring together some decision-makers, creating what we call a technical component, where members of the city, members of faith-based groups, community organizations, and the police department to get together and try and figure out some ground rules about what they thought we could do with, to improve the situation of our youth and to give them optional decisions that they could make that would be more positive for their lifestyles. I, I don't really see why they couldn't be included in the process. And after the decisions were made, I don't know if they've all been made, then it devolved to the actual providers of the services, such as the Boys and Girls Club or the YMCA. And I gather that certain segments of the community felt underrepresented, and I can be somewhat sympathetic to that. I think they should have a seat at the table.
All right, Mr. Gutierrez, same question. How would you ensure that there is inclusion on decision-making bodies for the youth or other groups that have been underrepresented in decision-making?
You guys are gonna find this shocking, but I think. Here you go. So as I was saying, you're gonna find this shocking, but I think we should have, council members should have office hours, because I don't know about you, but I don't have a card for any of the current council members, so if they have their cellphone number on that card, I'm not gonna know it. So one is first have more access for everyone, not just, not just young people. But on the issue of young people, here's, here's the point of all of this. The mayor's task force was created supposedly to find a way to prevent violence among young people. And according to the most recent, one of the, one recent grand jury reports, that task force did not include the families that are affected by violence, or the young people who are really the victims in most instances of the violence. So here's the thing, are we really, really listening to everyone? We're not. The reality is, that is one of the reasons I am running for the city council in the fourth district, because I don't believe that the current composition of the council is responsible to the community or responsive to their needs and priorities. And that must change. We must be a city council that includes everyone. If you come to the podium and you're talking and your two minutes are up, the, the one thing you're not gonna see me do is interrupt you mid-sentence and tell you that your time is up and, and basically wave you away. That is not the way to run a city. The people of the city deserve that.
Okay, Ms. Waterfield, same question. How would you ensure that there is inclusion on decision-making bodies for both our youth and other underrepresented groups?
Well, first of all, I find it pretty interesting that my opponent, for being a lawyer, doesn't know how to use the internet. If you could look up the city of Santa Maria. And City Hall has always had an open door. We do not close. And trust me, I would love to work certain hours. I would love to work from eight till five o'clock in the evening. We are twenty-four seven, Johnny-on-the-spot when it comes to constituents, no matter what the situation is. So I'd like to correct that one comment. The mayor's task force was set for decision-makers to come in to make sure that things were set for the youth. We have fighting back Santa Maria at the table. We had mental illness county members there. We had hospitals there, we had the sheriff there, we had everybody within the county. We had everybody within the county of Santa Barbara to work on the mayor's task youth. That was part one, and that was implemented. We have so many programs in regards to the youth. Abel Maldonado has created, Abel Maldonado Youth Center has created so many programs in regards to what this whole task force initiated in regards to keeping youth busy, to keeping youth off the street, to making sure that we have everything set up for them. CDBG money was also designated for this. Part two is coming, where the mayor will go ahead and start to bring in the kids after all of these decision-makers have put in place programs for them. Then they'll have the opportunity to come in and say what they would want to work through and what they wouldn't want to work through.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Moats, I think you're next. There were also several questions about development and economic development. One of them was, what specific thing would you do to attract higher-paying jobs and industry to our area?
Well, you have to provide an environment for these things to occur. And among the things would be the issue of personal safety. People have to feel safe in the community. I think prospective employers would like a community where there were educational opportunities. And we've worked on that a little bit now. Al in Hancock College has just made a deal with Leverne College to provide, as most of you know, four-year degrees in public administration and business administration. And I think that's nice. It's probably important for the city to provide an opportunity for new employers and businesses to be able to get their buildings built in a reasonably quick fashion, maybe with something like fast-track planning, and also to get some mitigation relief for things like traffic and things of that nature. So I think that's probably about it.
Mr. Gutierrez, what specific things would you propose to attract higher-paying jobs and industry to our area?
Well, to begin with, we must have, can everybody hear me? Yes. We must have a business enterprise office within City Hall that all it does basically is go after businesses, and businesses that pay higher wages, businesses that are 21st century technology businesses that can help us become competitive in the marketplace. Now, one of the ways that we do that is, one, we offer tax incentives for them to come to the city. After all, getting 25 cents on the dollar is better than getting zero cents on the dollar. One of the things that we have to do, though, is make sure that the businesses that we're attracting are the kind of businesses that are going to provide those jobs that are going to sustain the economy. No more cheap retail. That's one of the things that we have to be very careful about. The other thing is that it is great that Hancock is offering four-year college degrees, but I think we can do one better. There's been a lot of talk in this community about attracting a California State University campus to Santa Maria. That would allow my interest, of course, diversifying the local economy, and it would also, guess what? Train our kids, educate our kids to then have the jobs that we are going to attract. Here's one of the things, here's the first thing that as an employer or a company CEO asks, is what kind of tax breaks am I getting? The second thing, though, is what kind of environment are you offering my employees? Because after all, they're going to have to bring those employees with them. Well, here's the thing, why do we have to offer them in terms of quality of life right now? Very little. Great weather, great shopping apparently over by the freeway, but nothing else. Everyone, when you think of going somewhere to entertain, some of you, the last thing you think of is Santa Maria, and we need to fix that.
Thank you. What specific things would you do to attract and encourage higher-paying jobs and industry to our area?
Well, what the city of Santa Maria is doing now is not, we are not putting more layer of government on our city by having in-house economic development. We do that through the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce, which is the Economic Development Commission. And they have been out there doing a great job in regards to that. As far as the SCU University, you talk about economics, but yet you want these kids to go and have a huge debt for the same degree you could get for Leverne University. And that is just not economically feasible for them. Not only that, but we're also attracting the medical school to the city of Santa Maria. We have been working 24/7 in regards to acquiring a lot of these components that will allow the quality of life, that will allow you to stay close to home, go to school, get a four-year degree if you want to become an OP doctor, if you want to become a nurse practitioner, you can do that right here in your backyard. You don't have to go out and spend money on your housing. We have it right here, right where you live. And so economic development is something that we have done for many, many years in the city of Santa Maria. You look at our industrial area, we have Mind and Body. Mind and Body is a high-tech company that moved here from San Luis Obispo. You talk about starting pay for them is about $60,000 a person. I don't think any one of you would turn something down like that. We've got FedEx that has come in and paying higher jobs. People look at cheap retail, people make a good living off the Costco people, and so I'm just, you know, really astounded by how we talk about cheap things here in the city of Santa Maria.
Thank you. Ms. Soto, what specific things would you do to attract higher-paying jobs and industry to our area?
Thank you. One of the first things that we need to work on is revitalizing our downtown, and I know that that's something that our city is, has been saying that is a priority, and it's essential that we are proactive with that. When those executives are driving through our city, we want to make sure that they can envision themselves raising their families here. And so in order for us to bring robust, high-paying jobs to our city, we need to make sure that this is a location where, again, they can envision living here. In addition to that, I think that there's a lot that we can do in partnering with apprenticeship programs here in Santa Maria. They do a fabulous job of training individuals, and not only that, but as they're training them, they are paying them a living wage. And in addition to that, we can also make sure that we have community workforce agreements, also known as PLA's Project Labor Agreement set in place, so that when we do have high capital, large capital projects here in the city of Santa Maria, we are making sure that we are hiring local people and that those dollars stay here in Santa Maria, so that they can afford to live here. And I know that we have a great opportunity in doing so with the new waste landfill that we are hoping to open in the next couple of years. And so, again, having local workforce labor agreements put in place, revitalizing our downtown, working with our school officials to make sure that all students have the opportunities to thrive and have a good education is essential. I went to Chaminck University, I stay here in Santa Maria, but I also know that Chaminck University is a private institute and it's extremely costly. And so I am open to seeing us bring a state university gift in Santa Maria and bringing more jobs.
All right. So if you have our next question, Mr. Gutierrez, you're next. Okay, so this one might be a little bit shorter, but if you want to explain your reasoning for the answer, because it's kind of a yes-no question. So, when there is a vacancy on city council, do you favor having a new election or in appointing someone from the district that is unfilled in order to fill the seats?
Well, you know, I always support people having the opportunity to make the decision. So if there's ever a vacancy, I believe the city should have an election to fill that vacancy. Give the people the power. I think it's important to do that because that increases accountability. And by the way, just to make the record straight, just because I'm running in the fourth district doesn't mean that I'm only going to represent people in the fourth district. I think that as a city council member, it goes without saying that you are responsible for all of the residents. You are responsible for everything that happens in the city. The buck should stop with the city council and the mayor. One of the issues that I've had with the current city council, and I'm going to address this, I know it's not, it's kind of off-topic, but it's the issue of blaming the city employees for the current deficit. They claim it is because of unfunded pension liabilities that we're having this $8.5 million deficit. Well, here's the shocker, people. If I hire somebody to do work in my house, and after that person completes the work, I give that person a check, and my check bounces, whose fault is it? The fault, is it the fault of the person who did the work, or is it my fault? I think it's obvious that it is my fault, because one, I should have anticipated how much that was going to cost, or two, I should have gone out and I should have made sure that I had the funds to cover those expenses. So do not blame the city employees.
All right. Ms. Waterfield, when there is a vacancy on the city council, do you favor electing a new person or in appointing from the district with the unfilled seat?
I think, I believe that question is addressing, in the event should, in the third district, should Dr. Moats get elected, there's going to be an empty seat. And you have to look at when Mr. Moats first got elected, he was elected at large. So do we appoint at large, or do we appoint for the first district in regards to what we're going to do there? Because in 2020, you have District One and District Two. You know, so many people want it both ways, and they just, they just get upset in regards to when they get pushed up against the wall. I believe that when this, if this event arises, we probably should appoint for two years because elections are very costly. And again, on this panel, I hear people saying, everything is about cost, everything is about money. But when it comes to pursuing things that they want, they'll be glad to spend the money on themselves.
All right. Ms. Soto, when there is a vacancy on the city council, do you favor electing a new person or in appointing from the district with the unfilled seat?
Our city has a history of appointments, and we all know that. And in order for us to fully have transparency, it's essential that we listen to all constituents. And so I would be in favor of a special elections as well, in the event that Dr. Moats were to be successful. I also know that if we don't move forward with that, if our city council were to appoint someone, and most likely, it would probably be from Districts One or Two, it would make it easier for that individual in 2020 or when their seat is up to run again. And it would be more feasible for them to have a successful election. And so I'm all in favor of having a special election and really listening to the voters and asking them what they want. It's, as I'm door knocking, as I'm talking to folks, as I'm hitting the streets, people are eager for a change. And by us not giving people that opportunity to decide what kind of change they want, we are doing a disservice to all San Martins.
All right. Dr. Moats, when there is a vacancy on the city council, do you favor an election for a new person or in appointing from the district with the unfilled seat?
Now, that's an interesting question. As Ms. Soto points out, all the precedent up to this point has been to appoint. And that's been a difficult task. There's been a lot of discord and problems with appointing people. And the mechanism for appointing them was quite bizarre the last time it happened. But we're looking at a situation where this would be a two-year seat. And how much time would it take between the time of the election being certified in 2018 and the time someone else would be elected? You know, it could be that a campaign would occur and maybe the election would be held in the spring or the summer, and, you know, somebody might get elected for maybe only a year or a year and a half. So that's a difficulty. Bottom line is, I think I have to think about that one. Well, by the way, one other thing, Mr. Gutierrez said something about blaming the city employees for the budget impasse. I don't think anybody really blames the city employees. I think blame the past city councils. I mean, it was a contract between the city and the employees, and the city has to honor the contract.
Okay. I think, Ms. Waterfield, you're next. Okay. What role, if it has one, does the marijuana industry have as a possible funding source to improve the city's budget numbers?
It doesn't.
You don't always have to use your whole two minutes here.
That's my answer, it doesn't.
All right, Ms. Soto.
My understanding is that Measure T passed with over 75% of Santa Barbara County voters being in favor of it. And so when we're talking about bringing in revenue to the city of Santa Maria, I am open to having an ordinance of marijuana here in the city of Santa Maria. Santa Barbara County, in my last conversation with our county board of supervisors, Steve Flavignino, he mentioned that he believed it was silly for our city not to have an ordinance. The county of Santa Barbara is expecting over $25 million in revenue, and part of that revenue, the first $7 million, will be going towards making sure and enforcing that it doesn't land in the hands of young people. And so I would be in favor of actually having a first percentage of those funds that would be coming into the city, turning them over to youth development, youth development and leadership programs in our city. You know, by us not having an ordinance here in Santa Maria, by us not selling it here in Santa Maria, it's still going to be here in Santa Maria, it's just that folks are going to be going to unincorporated areas of Santa Barbara County. They will be going to San Luis Obispo County, generating revenue there, and then bringing it into our community. And so when we're talking about the costs associated with having marijuana here in Santa Maria, I mean, it's still going to be there, we're just not getting any of the revenue, and I don't think that that's very smart of us to do.
Okay. So, Dr. Moats, what role, if any, does the marijuana industry have as a possible funding source to improve the city budget numbers?
Well, that's a very interesting question. Expectations of revenue sometimes aren't met, and there are expenses involved, too, because the city of Santa Maria would have to develop a bureaucracy to deal with this. Right now, if somebody needs medical marijuana, it can be transported to them from outside the city. I think one thing you need to remember is, if somebody really wants marijuana, they can plant it in their backyard. I think everybody in Santa Maria can, if they want, have six marijuana plants. And those plants get pretty tall. I wonder how they pick six. Well, I have three. I think a measured response is probably a good idea. In the state of Colorado, which, where marijuana is rampant, one city didn't go with marijuana legalization, it's Colorado Springs, which is an interesting little enclave of conservative thought in a rather open state. thought in a rather liberal state. But I think they're taking a wait-and-see attitude to see how the other communities do. You know, it was Governor Brown himself that said, "I don't see how adding an additional mind-altering substance into our array of things we can put in our bodies is a good idea." So, you know, I voted against it inherently, I'm not a real favorite of tokine and getting doped up. Other people like it. So, you know, if it looks like the city can turn the money off it, I fully consider it.
Thank you. Ms. Gutierrez.
Gosh, you know, if my sainted mother make her soul rest in peace was here, she would probably throw a dish shoe at me for saying this, but here's the thing. I think my job as a city council member is not to veto voters. They've already selected and elected to legalize marijuana. I think that the best the city can do is to regulate it heavily, but to allow the sale of it, because frankly, the use and the sale of it is going to go on. And the only thing that's going to happen is that we, as a city, are going to lose revenue. Revenue that could be used, get this, to indicator children about the dangers of drug use. How about that? We could use some of that money too, to revitalize downtown, okay? So, we can't be, at the same time that we can't be beggars and choosers, we have to do it in a way that makes sense for the city. And we do it in consultation with nonprofits, with the various agencies that know more about, you know, how to regulate this type of sales. And then we just regulate it. And we regulate it heavily, and when those who are selling it are not following the regulations, we shut them down. And that's it.
So, am I starting at the beginning again? I'm there. Okay. So this is going to be our last question, and then we will go to the summation. Each person will have two minutes to present a concluding statement. So Ms. Soto, our last question, and it's, you know, a very divisive subject. Okay. What do you think can be done to revitalize our, not only our downtown? A lot of the questions were about, how can we just make this a better place for people to live? A lot of them were about, not just, you know, the youth and different things, but just regular middle-income people, how can we make this a better place to live for those folks that want to come here and live? So revitalization, make this a better place, in general?
So I know that our city is, we're embarking in a general plan update. And so this is a really exciting time for Santa Maria, because it's an opportunity for all of us to come together and really talk about what our vision is for our community. A few weeks ago, I met with, I'm not going to mention names, but I met with an individual who is heavily involved in the city decision-making here in Santa Maria. And as we were talking about the revitalizing, revitalization of downtown, one of the things that he mentioned was, "We need to wait for developers to come in and show us plans for our downtown, and have them be, we need to make it so, so that they invest in Santa Maria." And I believe Rafael said this earlier, and I agree, we need to be the first to invest in Santa Maria. We've been having multiple meetings with community members, asking them what their vision is for our city. Why is it that we're going to wait and have someone from the outside come in and tell us what our city needs to look like? Santa Maria is, we are in what seems to be in an identity crisis. We don't know who we, what we want our city to look like, and we need to, again, we need to stop, listen to our communities, invite all Santa Morians to the table, and letting us know what they envision Santa Maria to be. In addition to that, I know that our city is working on an inter, in making our city more walkable and bikeable. And I know that we had a bike plan a couple of years ago, and I don't know what happened to that. I know that we are now working on a new plan, but I don't understand why, what happened to the first one. And so one of the things that I want to make sure is that that doesn't happen again with this burn, and that we truly move forward with making this a city that's bikeable, walkable, safe for all, and that we listen to all Santa Morians, and that we truly invest in our community.
All right. Ms. Soto, what are your ideas for revitalization of our area?
Well, obviously, the downtown area needs a lot of improvement. But I think if you wait another couple of months, you'll begin to see some signs of improvement. We've already approved a rezoning, and plans have been submitted, they're in plan check right now. We're a very nice mixed-use project on the northwest corner of Broadway and Main Street that'll have three or four commercial establishments on the first floor, and three stories of apartments above it. And sometimes, you know, if we get someone to go first, others will follow. And so we're kind of hoping that that'll be the first step. I tell you, I'm not really in love with Pearlman Park. I don't know if you've seen Pearlman Park, but it has a bizarre sculpture in it, it's supposed to be a playground. If Pearlman Park, I think, were sold to a private developer, okay, well, if you think about it, maybe we could, given there's a restriction, you have really nice landscaping. But I mean, if we took that and built another real nice mixed-use building, I mean, where are we going to put the mixed-use buildings? They have to go somewhere. The, oh, and the Town Center Mall. The Town Center Mall has a new owner, probably most of you know that. And the previous Town Center Mall owner wasn't really enthusiastic to get long-term leases, so he might have heard the new buyer. But now we've got a new buyer, and so we might get some new establishments. In fact, I've been told there's almost a certainty we'll get a Victoria's Secret.
All right. So here we go. Ms. Gutierrez, what are your ideas for revitalization in our community?
My ideas for revitalizing the downtown of New York, and they're all found on my website, but I'm going to go and touch bases just on a few of them. We had a downtown redevelopment specific plan for quite a number of years now. The problem is, we don't follow that plan. In the meantime, while that plan was in force, we approved a new shopping center over by the freeway, when according to that plan, we were supposed to encourage new retail to go into the downtown area. So we're not following that plan. Another thing that we did is, we approved the building of a theater right on the corner of Cook and Broadway a few years ago, and there is not a single entrance to that theater from the outside. So according to the plan that we had, the downtown specific plan, we were supposed to make the downtown more pedestrian-friendly, more bicyclist-friendly. How is that working? Another thing that we did is, we approved a hotel at the north end of town. So here's what happens when we do that. We were supposed to, hotels were supposed to be part of the component of the downtown revitalization. Why? Because they increase foot traffic, and they attract people to the downtown area. By us approving the hotels in the north end of town, here's what happens. If I'm a tourist or a businessman, I come off the freeway, I go around, I go in the parking lot, I go in to my room, and when it's time for me to go eat lunch, or dinner, or shop, guess what? I get back on my car, and then I go out, and I don't necessarily come to Santa Maria. So we need to start doing better. Another thing that I want to encourage is designate the entire Broadway and main corridors as high-density mixed-use development. And in order to encourage developers to come, we provide task rates and fast-structured committee processes.
All right. Ms. Waterfield, what are your ideas for revitalization in our community?
Well, we seem to be on the subject of the downtown, and so we'll stick to that. We seem to be on the subject of the downtown, and so we'll stick to that. My opponent is not aware that we do have specific incentives for the downtown area. That's why we just approved a new mixed-use apartment housing building that saved him tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars for encouragement for the downtown area. Another big component of the downtown area is that it is owned not by the city of Santa Maria, it is owned by Caltrans. Main Street and Broadway are state-owned highways, so anything that you have to do has to go through to get their approval. When a developer comes in and wants to make a huge investment of their own money, not government money, but their own invested money, they are going to go to a place that's going to be most conducive to allow them to do what they need to do with that piece of property. Caltrans have been so restrictive in allowing the certain uses that we can have in the downtown area. One component of that is the plan that we are currently working on. We received a $350,000 grant from Caltrans to produce a plan. That plan went through, we had a public meeting, which we brought a lot of people in to pick out the decor for what we wanted. We submitted it back to Caltrans. Caltrans said, "I'm sorry, we wanted a conceptual plan, this is too detailed. Now we're going to have to do traffic studies." So it's not that we are not working on the downtown plan, it's that we have issues with Caltrans that keep on hampering our city. So if my opponent was aware of all of these issues, he would know what was going on.
Thank you. All right. So we are going to move on to our kind of final concluding statement. So each candidate will have two minutes, and just kind of to wrap up and leave us with some final thoughts, and we will start with Dr. Moats.
Just to get off the subject for a second, I wondered, why are all those hotels going in on North Broadway? And so I've asked around, and I've been told that they're there because the people who built them felt they'd get the most profit from them there, from tourists who weren't necessarily interested in visiting the Santa Maria Mall, but were interested in going to the beach areas and just wanted the cheap place to stay that's immediately accessible off the freeway. And that's why they're there. It would be great if we could get a hotel in downtown Santa Maria. The bridge across Broadway, I think, was originally put there to be a walkway to a hotel. Wouldn't that be a wonderful place for one? So what we want to do is make Santa Maria a place where people will build a hotel in the downtown area. Boy, am I all for bicycle paths, too. Have anybody tried to bicycle down either Main Street or Broadway? It's awful. I have the choice between being killed in the street, bicycling on the sidewalk, and being given a citation. The bicycle are what it's supposed to be. I just got back from a trip, I was in Germany, and I was noticing how they do bicycle paths there. The sidewalks, which are much wider than ours, are divided in half, halves painted green, and that's where bicycles are, and halves just regular sidewalk, loathe the person who would walk on the bicycle path, because they have a stoplight there. But Santa Maria would be a great place to be bicycle-friendly.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Moats. All right. Ms. Gutierrez, your concluding statements and final thoughts?
So, I think we all recognize that Santa Maria has a lot of problems, but it has great potential. And one of the reasons that I'm running is because I don't think that potential is being developed. I don't think that potential is being tapped. And I think we need to work on a lot of these problems all at the same time. We cannot limit one single one of it. All of them form part of a puzzle that makes this city. And this city has the potential to be a great city. We are the biggest city between Salinas and Oxtar. And we have young people, energetic people, living here, we have an entrepreneurial class, we have to support the small businesses. And I'm asking you, as a candidate, not to just go for it, but to actually work with it. Work in my campaign, and once elected, work with your city leaders to make this community the best city that it can be in this area. Not now, I'm sorry, not later, now. We need to do it now, because we have to look at things long-term. If we plan for things now, we can make this city a better city five, 10, 15, 20 years from now. And if we don't do anything at all right now, or we keep doing the same things that we've been doing, business as usual, that is not going to happen. Imagine if we had started doing some of the things that we thought about doing, you know, five years ago, 10 years ago, how different this city would look like? It would be a pedestrian-friendly city, a bicyclist-friendly city, a city that supports projects that provide affordable housing, a city that has a downtown that we all can be proud of, that we can call this the heart of the city. Thank you.
Your concluding statement and final thoughts?
Well, I want to say thank you again for everyone for being in attendance, and also for the League of Women Voters and all the sponsors. In 1985, when I first moved here to Santa Maria, Santa Maria was a number-one hub on the Central Coast. It was a number-one hub because we were the leading retail, we were the leading industrial, we were the leading technology, we were the leading in ad. We had all the components we had to make Santa Maria a great city, and it was. Then we had the downturn in the economy. The economy hit everybody hard. It even hit Vandenberg Air Force Base. That's why we started the commercial launching effort over at Vandenberg Air Force Base, which ended up being a huge success. We always kept on developing new progresses in regards to helping Santa Maria grow, and which we did. We came out of a huge economy deficit when, back in 2008, 2009, but what the city leaders did at that time is that we had a huge savings account, and we were forward-thinking. We were so forward-thinking that we ended up purchasing a building for our police department that Lockheed ended up, we bought it from Lockheed, they ended up leasing it back to the city of Santa Maria, which helped pay off that huge lease. We did all of these types of money-saving structures. The city of Santa Maria is not in debt for any building. Everything we've done, we paid as we went along. I hear a lot of, "New government needs to do this, new government needs to do that." We don't need to go in debt, we need to pay as we go, as we always have. And as a City of Santa Maria councilwoman, I will guarantee that I will move forward with paying as we go, so we do not get in debt. We cannot overspend what we don't have.
Thank you. All right. And finally, Ms. Soto, your concluding statement and final thoughts?
Again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us, thank you to all of you for being here this evening. As I mentioned earlier, I am a proud product of Santa Maria. I was born and raised here, I completed my entire college education here, and I am a homeowner and resident in the Westgate neighborhood. I have always, I've always had deep love for my community, and one of the things that I want to make sure that happens this November is that we are reaching out to all Santa Morians, and that all Santa Morians are heard, all Santa Morians are spoken to, and again, that all Santa Morians are invited to the table. I want the decisions of our city government to be made hand-in-hand with all constituents and in full transparency. I want us to, I want our city government to be reflective of the kindness and compassion of everyday Santa Morians, and I feel like that that's what's currently lacking, and we can do a better job of that. In a community where over 70% of individuals identify as Latino, I don't understand why we don't have interpretation services at our city council. Why is it that city halls are closed every Friday? Why is it that the lights are turned off every Friday? We need to make Why is it that city halls are, are closed every Friday? Why is it that the lights are shut, are turned off every Friday? We need to make sure that we are accessible. We need to make sure that we are there. And we need to make sure that we are being held accountable. I want it, I want to see all San Amorians partaking in our government. And the only way that we can do that is by reaching out, reaching out and, and talking to them. And so that's what I'm looking forward to doing if elected this, this November.
Almost our conclusion, Lisa Cornhill, our president, who's just returning from her vacation. That's why she looks so happy and healthy. We want to thank all of you for participating, and all of you for participating. This is democracy in action. So it only works if everybody's here doing their part. And it, it really doesn't work if we don't have candidates that are willing to come forth, serve, make the hard decisions, argue, and figure out what's best.